Five o'clock, hold this meeting to order. The regularly scheduled meeting of the Pitts County Public Hospital District Number One Board of Commissioners. Today's date is August 25th, 2022. Mandy, can we put start of a roll call?
Erica Lippenau.
Here.
Bob Davis.
Here.
John Ward.
Here.
Terry Clark.
Here.
Julie Peterson.
Here.
Scott Olander.
Here.
Stacy Olah.
Here.
Anna Scott.
Here.
Vicky Maturo.
Here.
Rhonda Holden.
Here.
Dr. O'Brien.
Here.
Dr. Martin.
Here.
Uh, Matt Altman.
Here.
Jeff Yamada.
Here.
Mandy Olson.
Here.
Ron Erlacher.
Here.
Michelle Worrell.
Here.
Nicole Hilderman.
Here.
Linda Navarre. Tricia Senick.
That is that she's here.
Okay, I think that is everyone.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Mandy. All right, let's move to the approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda, please.
Second.
Loaf by Bob, seconded by John. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay. That passes. Consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Moved by Matt.
Second.
Seconded by Bob, consent agenda, all in favor, please say aye.
All right.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. That one passes as well. Public comment and announcements, if you have a public comment, please keep your comment to three minutes or less. Please state your name and address at the beginning of your comment, and also be advised that we do not respond to public comment during public sessions. Do we have any public comments? Or announcements? All right, does not appear so. Reports and dashboards, Mandy Olson, Chief Quality Officer.
Hi, so to start with tonight, I think we'd like to have Linda talk about approving the compliance program policy. Linda, did you, were you able to join with audio? Don't hear that. She is, I see her, but she's not responding. Um, I believe that this policy went through a compliance committee, it does need to be approved by the board. And so we're requesting that, um, the board approve it today. I think it was part of the presentation she gave last time, too.
I know this thing has to be approved periodically, but have there been any major changes since we saw it last?
I am trying to get to it.
So this is, uh, it starts on page 20. Um, Mandy, I know I didn't review any major changes to it, and typically Linda will walk me through it.
Yeah, it looked very.
Yes. I think if I recall correctly, there was just a few, like, title changes, like that Erica is the president of the board now. Um, if I'm recalling correctly, that was, that was pretty much the extent of it.
And, uh, Mandy, do you have a copy in front of you now?
I'm, my computer's kind of going slow, but I think I do, yeah.
I just had a quick question, if you're able to pull up the copy.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, so section seven, subsection F, subsection double I, uh, the HIPAA violations of paragraph, can you see that? Seven F, double I.
It's, yeah, I'm just having a problem with my um, PDF scrolling. Okay, so you said section seven.
F, Frank. And I, I.
Mm-hmm.
What page is that on? Uh, for us, it's page 28 of the master and nine and 11 of the actual document. Okay, thank you.
So it says HIPAA violations must be reported to the Department of Health and Human Services no later than 60 days after the calendar year?
Correct, I just wanted to confirm that it truly is after the calendar year is the correct terminology. It just seems like, like it happened on January 2nd. It seems like the HIPAA violation could go 14 months without being reported, I just wanted to make sure that was an accurate phrasing.
As far as I know, but I would have to confirm with Cindy Kelly, but, um, the, I mean, she is on top of our, uh, privacy regulations um, to the letter, so I, I would be surprised if that was inaccurate, I think there are different rules. Um, let's see. So that, yeah, I, I believe that's correct, it's not the Office of the, uh, Internal General, OIG, though we do have to report it after determining there's a violation. So I think the, um, Department of Health and Human Services is kind of a, that's not who's doing that initial investigation with us.
So it's, it's more for long-term reporting, not necessarily corrective action or anything like that?
That, that's my understanding of it, but, um, again, if you, if you'd like me to take it back to Cindy to verify, we could do that, too.
Uh, no, I just, I just was curious, I, I know we've gone over it, so I, it's, this is the first time I've seen a clean document, I always see the one that's all, you know, redlined and stuff, so, uh, and, and Matt, to kind of answer your question, you know, we've gone through it as part of the compliance committee numerous times, and we've made little verbiage tweaks and just tried to make sure that, uh, everything was accurate, so that's the main reason for this update. Um, and so, my main issue is there's a couple of super tiny little editing things, nothing related with content, but just little tiny, you know, missing periods, uh, uh, extra space, things like that. If Linda was here, I was just going to show her the document and give her a copy so she'd have it, but those little tiny things notwithstanding, I would, I would move to approve this document.
That's a motion from?
Yes, that's a very long-winded motion.
All right, it's been moved by Joe people.
Second.
Seconded by Terry. All in favor of approving the compliance program policy? You say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Passes.
John, if, if you would be willing to just, um, pop your, uh, you know, punctuation issues, uh, hand them to Julie or Mandy so we could put them in the, in our office mail, and Linda will make sure that those pieces, you know, it's just the punctuation correction is updated.
Perfect, will do.
Um, by the way, I, uh, John, that question you had, it looks like, um, just from my own brief sort of, uh, research here, it says, uh, if a HIPAA-covered entity experiences a data breach involving fewer than 500 individuals, it has to be reported to HHS, can be reported within the same 60-day timeframe where the affected individuals are notified, just as large a breach as must be, but it says covered entities can document the incident, then report it to the HHS office, or so, no later than 60 days after the end of the calendar year, so. So that seems to be accurate.
Okay, good, thank you.
Sure.
Well, thank you for the, um, help of everybody who put that together, Linda throughout this, thank you. All right, what else do you have for us, Mandy?
Um, so my report is in your packet, uh, I do want to let you know that we did receive our onsite survey last Friday. Uh, Bonnie Gibson from the Quality Department helped escort the DNV surveyor into the Emergency Department, and she did um, a review of patient care education that we provided, um, our chart audits, um, and got to meet with Julie, I believe, too, before she left. Uh, we've been notified that our, uh, we no longer have a condition level finding that's been closed from our survey, and now we need to, um, provide objective evidence for four of the findings by November 21st, and they will be letting us know in a few days or a few weeks if we are final approval for deemed accreditation, so, um, I will be keeping you all updated about that, but uh, it was a really great experience for Bonnie, and, um, just really proud of the team and how quickly they made those corrections and got everyone educated, it was, is pretty incredible, uh, and the surveyor was very impressed.
And when we finally do get our accreditation, we're going to have a celebration. It's fantastic.
Absolutely.
The pace speed at which this has all moved ever since the, um, trifecta of surveys, um, that week, it's, it's moved tremendously fast, and to me at this point already, well done, everybody.
And, um, the surveyor was really impressed, too, she said, with how, um, our organization had a lot to improve, and we did so very, very, very quickly, within that, you know, time span, where other people have really struggled with this. Um, it is a very common finding, and, um, they've just made incremental progress over time, she was really impressed with how quickly we improved so many parts of it, so that felt really good to hear. And I do think it has a huge part to do with, um, some of the resources we provide to our clinical staff, uh, whether that's Bonnie out of quality, or Cody Staub is the Stroke Sepsis semi-coordinator, our staff development, um, nurses. So I, I think that's part of the reason we were able to, to move so quickly, and we don't, we don't reinvent the wheel, we're happy to, to use materials and expertise where we find it, um, to help us, so. Really impressed. Um, I will take questions if there are any on the dashboard, and then if, um, the board would like, I do have a few positive feedback comments that I would love to read, uh, that I didn't have prepared, I didn't have at the time of my, I built my board report.
We can listen to positive comments and then have questions for you, does that sound good?
Sounds great. Okay, the first one is for Tyler in the Imaging Department. He was a delight to work with, I was here to do a bone density scan. Tyler was engaging, positive, and very comfortable to work with. You could feel his smile even through his mask, please give him extra recognition. And then this one was to Dear Ms. Peterson, I'm a 91-year-old man and a longtime patient of the KVH Hospital. I wish to express my sincere gratitude and appreciation of the hospital staff, in particular, a nurse who I know as Alex. Through the years, Alex has been involved in my healthcare. She is the most caring and qualified nurse that I have ever known. I cannot say enough good things about Alex, she represents the hospital in a most positive way. I thank you and the hospital staff for the great service that I received through the years. And this one was to Julie, I want you to know that I was a guest in your emergency department, and was very pleased with the service that I received. Among those who provided me with excellent care were Eric Burkus, RN, David Frick, DO, Kenneth Lindsay, MD, and Kayla Engelhardt, RN. There were a few other people in attendance whose names that I am afraid I have forgotten. However, everyone provided me with friendly, professional, and timely care. And the last one was to Ms. Peterson, Ms. Maturo, and Dr. Martin. I want to express my appreciation for the ER team that treated me. I came in about 6:00 AM with extreme back pain. The doctors and nurses took outstanding care of me during my stay. I can't express enough gratitude for the treatment and care they demonstrated. When I left, a couple of hours later, my pain was markedly lessened and had a course of treatment to help me mend. Unfortunately, I don't have the paperwork at my fingertips to call them out by name, but please let them know how grateful I am. So that was some great feedback we got.
Very nice.
Yeah, I'm happy to take any questions.
This is Linda, can you hear me now?
Okay, Linda.
Yes.
Hi, they finally worked, okay.
Were you able to hear us when we were discussing the compliance?
Yes, and then the, the compliance program, um, policy, you know, it's, it's, it has not, uh, changed in, in the basic content of it, you know, the whole purpose of it is just to, um, really kind of pull out the seven elements of a compliance program and, and our focus areas within that, but, um, I'm sorry, I, I sent the, um, added the track changes version as well, but it doesn't look like you received that one um, to view, but I can point out on by page number where there was some changes made.
I, I don't think that's necessary, I mean, I did read the thing, I'm sure we all did, and, um, I think from what we saw, it looked good and we approved it, but, uh, I was just, it was really just more about curiosity, since it looked very familiar from the last time we saw it.
Yes, yes.
But thank you.
Basically, just a little, just a little bit of updating and a reformatting of some of the sentence structures, so that it's, it's more, um, easily to, to stick to the point of what we were trying to get across.
Thank you, Linda.
I had one question for Mandy, um, so it, I like the, um, it looks like the, uh, restraints were improving quite a bit, and one of the, uh, one of the things that you were touting in your report was 11 of 12, I guess, were, were properly documented, and I saw that, uh, you, um, uh, reminded people about the restraints protocols and things in the ER, or in the ED when you, as part of a root cause analysis. Is it, so is this a trend, or are people starting to, to sort of, uh, pick up on the documentation? I know we had some trouble with that in the past, but it seems like things are moving in the right direction, is, is that a, a trend that, or you think it's?
I think, yes, I thi, I think it's both, one, there's been some of the, um, IT solutions that they've, uh, wanted that were finally implemented. I think it also has to do with the fact that there's been attention and focus on this with our DNV survey, often some of our, uh, mental health, uh, patients are some of those who are, uh, restrained. Um, and that is also an area that they want to get further training in from, from DNV, and, and is a common finding in other hospitals, so. I, I do think that this is showing, if you remember, the, uh, part of the work was on the provider orders, so it made it easier for them to be alerted that they needed to get a new order, and also, so that it, um, reminded the nurse to do their documentation, and, and I do think that that's, that, that's what we're seeing as a result of that working. Um, they are transitioning to have, uh, Cody Staub in the ER do the reviews, um, himself in the ER, instead of Jeff Holdeman was doing them for all of the units, um, and we think that will further help, uh, to have the own team, you know, looking at their own documentation.
I know this has come up a few different times, so I really appreciate, sounds like a lot of people have been doing a lot of work, you know, from a lot of different directions, so, you know, on the technology, and also having Cody monitor it in the ED and stuff like that, so anyway, just, uh, I appreciate the work you guys have done on that, and, uh, I'm glad to see the improvement.
It'll probably always be on this dashboard, unfortunately, but yeah, we, we won't give up on it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe I have a question, um, and this is, uh, perhaps Dr. Martin as well. At a recent meeting, there was mention that monkeypox would likely have a due name bestowed upon it to reduce stigma, um, and I remember hearing about that in the news a bit, but no, that seems to have on another paper, maybe monkeypox, I mean, monitors or state? Does anybody know that?
You know this one, we do.
Okay.
Yes, I, I had heard the same thing, um, I, when we are communicating with public health and the communication I've seen from the Department of Health is calling it monkeypox still, but I have heard the Public Health Department call it MPV or MPD sometimes, and I think that's a little bit to get away from that term.
Okay.
But, but that's just an acronym of monkeypox, so.
Getting ready in parentheses seems a little ominous, hopefully it's not going to be a huge, huge thing, but it's good that we are getting ready, and hopefully it, um, is easy, relatively easy to manage compared to COVID.
Uh, we have had our first, uh, case of testing in the county, and we have been, um, collaborating with the he, health department and other local agencies, um, and Anna's getting a work group together to, um, with multiple people throughout the organization and outside the organization, so we can make sure that we are consistent with our partners in the community and making sure it's as smooth as possible for anyone who does need testing or treatment.
Something that is worth calling out, um, oh, a couple things, I guess. The first is that, uh, a lot has been made, probably too much, of what are at-risk demographics in the community. If you look at the state of Washington, we're on the order of 400 cases, over 300 of them are in King County, so I would suggest that the at-risk demographic is living in King County. Um, and we have had pediatric cases and geriatric cases statewide. Um, the second point is earlier today, the World Health Organization reported that cases have fallen by about 21% over the last week. So, um, while we were making plans to put signs at the county line on Snow Quality Pass, saying Fire Show Not Pass, um, uh, I don't think that's going to work, but hopefully this will, as well.
So on the, the geriatric patients, uh, there was some discussion that the smallpox vaccine would help protect people from monkeypox, but those, do you know those geriatric patients actually did have a smallpox vaccine?
I don't, uh, the way it was reported was just a statement from the state that there has, that there has been cases in persons over 65 and as young as 19 months. Um, so, I don't have any more specific about horse, or the supposition would be that, uh, probably just about everybody over the age of 50 is, have a smallpox vaccine.
Right. Maybe I have another question for you, the ED transfer communication project. Um, I apologize if you've explained that one to me before, but, um, in a nutshell, what is that called?
Um, that is actually a program, uh, that was adopted through the Medicaid Improvement Program with the state, uh, so the Healthcare Authority in Washington State says that we must work on that to be eligible for ship grants, um, and flex grants in our state. And, um, basically, it's a set of measures that look at when you're transferring a patient out of your critical access hospital ED to another hospital, how are you communicating with that other agency to make sure that you have smooth, uh, transfer and, and the information that you need, so it's things like, um, did we provide a transfer communication form from nurse to nurse? Um, was there a summary of care? I think there's a total of eight things that they're, they're looking at, um, and, and so we report that data to WISHA, and it does help us be eligible for the, um, like I said, this, some of the state grants.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have a couple of questions for Mandy. Mandy, do you have the dashboards in front of you?
I do.
Um, bottom of page two of your dashboards, the compliance concerns reported.
Yep.
Um, there's a vertical downline, does that mean anything, or is that just anomaly on this graph?
Yep, that's when, um, originally, when you guys wanted this compliance dashboard created, it was only, um, confirmed concerns that were on here, um, and, and it was only confirmed compliance concerns. Linda gets a lot of calls that may or may not be related to compliance, and in the past, that, so, to the left of that dotted line, those calls are not included in this data. Um, to the right, she did, she, she is now including all calls, even if they really aren't compliance-related. Does that make sense?
Thank you, that, yeah, that helps, I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, on the next page, uh, the emergency department, uh, upper left-hand corner, and urgent care, lower right-hand corner. Just curious as to your thoughts, uh, obviously, Cleon is getting very high patients, patient satisfaction. The ED here is struggling just a little bit with same sort of numbers, is it because the ED here has more complex patients who might be more likely to be frustrated, or what, what do you think is causing this discrepancy in patient satisfaction?
Well, well, one thing that you don't see on this dashboard is the benchmarks with other folks, and, um, emergency departments traditionally have much lower scores than all other settings, so, um, if, if you, we were seeing our emergency department compared to others, you'd see that that's, um, pretty typical. Um, we do have room for improvement in the emergency department, obviously, and, and compared to others, but, uh, that is fairly normal for the emergency department to have much lower scores than all the other settings.
And, and what do you think is the cause, the primary cause of a lack of satisfaction? Is it waiting times, is it quality of care, what, what do you get out of that?
I think it, I think it's waiting times, I also think it's, usually this is the worst day of someone's life, when they're going to the emergency department. It's, it's not a fun experience usually for someone. Um, something traumatic has happened, or they're, you know, so ill that they're needing emergency care, and even when someone is doing the best job possible, it's usually not a, a fond experience people have, so. Um, I do know that some people have unrealistic expectations of waiting times, um, sometimes it's the, uh, their perception of how well the, the team listened to them, um, or prioritize their care, that's a frequent, um, concern we hear about in emergency departments, feeling like, um, the provider didn't listen to them, or, or give them the time, or the attention, or, or do what they thought needed to be done, which sometimes is not, um, usually is not, what the patient thinks isn't necessarily what needs to be done, that's why they're seeking emergency care for that expertise in an emergency.
That said, um, to the extent that the issue is waiting times, we really are victims of our success. Uh, this emergency department, unlike any that I've ever seen, uh, gets sideways if somebody's in the waiting room more than 15 minutes. Uh, when I worked at Good Samaritan, when I worked at Auburn Regional, four-hour wait times were not uncommon, and in fact, were the norm. Uh, so, we, we've spoiled people, and they, they expect that they're going to get through the door in 10 minutes. I checked in, why haven't I been seen? So, I, it's not a bad problem to have.
I had to say.
Uh, a fair number of people that are coming up from, like, Sela or, or Yakima, who are ER because Memorial Hospital is so packed? Vicky?
I don't know.
I, I see, yes.
Yeah.
Kind of totally, I've heard that, but I don't have numbers.
Yeah, I don't have numbers either, but it's happened.
Because I, I've had people tell me, uh, that I know in the area that they, you know, people that came up here because Memorial Hospital is packed, so the answer is yes, huh? Yeah.
Well, in my experience from patient, so care and service, or, uh, whether that's a, a concern or a compliment, is typically the folks who come to us from out of town to our emergency department are very complimentary, and I think that is because they've experienced different emergency department visits, um, and some of our locals are really upset, yeah, when, um, a finger-kneading suture isn't seen within 30 minutes.
I saw an article today that Yakima Memorial in 2021 had the busiest emergency department in the state, so it's, um, one of 86,000 patients. I saw it on the internet, so it must be true.
I guess your perspective, we're on track for our busiest year ever with 15,000. Uh, and then I'm just going to say one more page over on ENT and allergy, it feels like we're doing something well there. Pretty positive feedback?
Yeah. I think they do have, if I remember correctly, um, there's kind of low numbers there, but, yes, the, the people that are there really love them.
That's great.
I also am to that, we, ENT and allergy started doing all of the allergy injections now for the organization, so we're seeing, I think, some satisfaction come through from that.
So, Mandy, um, could I ask you to, uh,
Yes.
chat a little bit about the hospital-acquired infections? If we haven't had any since January, but then in June, we had a pop-up of three, was there any, uh, a finding in the hospital that caused it, or it was just one of those unlucky things?
Um, no, June is, uh, interesting, and, um, uh, I was gonna, just make sure I had my notes here in front of me, um, make sure I'm remembering correctly, I believe it's actually four in, um, June, and, um, what is unusual is we did have one of our, the first catheter-acquired urinary tract infections in, like, 10 years, uh, which is really, really frustrating, um, so they weren't surgical site infections, they were, here we go, there's, um, they were, they were other things. And, um, And, um, the, what's, what's even more maddening is Vicky had a concern that there might be an issue with, uh, our catheters, the urinary catheters. And so, um, Anna and, and her had done a review of cases and looked at if there was anything, you know, we were concerned about as far as, uh, doc, getting the catheter out early. Um, just different things we, that are part of the standard care of a urinary catheter, and we didn't find anything. And then we had this, uh, urinary catheter. So, um, Anna's going out with the teams and providing, um, more education with staff development too about, um, just shoring that up. But it's, it's a real big bummer, uh, that after ten years we had one. Uh, the other two are actually, uh, COVID, uh, healthcare-associated COVID infections. And they're the only two we've had. They, um, were, are believed after investigation to be brought in by family members. Um, in one of the cases, the patient was on, um, comfort care and was expected to expire. And so we did allow more visitation than we normally would. Um, that patient did not expire, which is great, but did end up, um, getting COVID from, um, their family members. So, uh, that's one of them. And I, the other case, a similar situation, the spouse, uh, the one visitor, you know, in the room without a mask with their, their loved one and, um, ended up leaving because they weren't feeling well, had COVID, and then their, um, family member had COVID.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
May I add that a couple of those patients were boarders that were here for, one of them being in a hundred days.
Wow.
Yeah, well, one was a swing bed and one was a border. Yeah.
Really? So we kept a dirty human being in here a long time, huh?
We kept, we kept.
No.
Yeah.
Mandy, on page twelve, uh, the, the Washington Health Collaborative Compliance Committee is close to here. Where is that traditional hall? Is it a rotating post?
Yes, yeah. And in fact, I think Dr. Martin had the CMO group from them come. Uh, they really like our location for, um, for, for rotating for their in-person meetings. And so it's just the compliance committee's turn to come here.
And each other collaborative here as well.
So we feel, should feel pretty special about that. So, I'm very excited.
At least for the CMO.
I mean, we're fortunate that we're centrally located too.
The other place that the physician could like, I mean, the council, but that's harder to get to. So we, we come in second.
Have any other questions for me? Oh, right, thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Julie, here's from Chief Executive Officer.
So I do have a couple of updates and, um, just to back up and talk about anesthesia a little bit. If you will recall, there were two required staffing levels and the new anesthesia contract. Um, we initially were satisfied with then having three anesthesia providers dedicated to KDH. Um, but we're requiring them by November first to move to a fourth provider so that we can begin, um, improving the throughput in our emergency departments. And, and again, these providers are on call, so they're involved with the emergency department. They also provide service to OB as well as our, our surgical patients. Um, shortly after the contract was implemented, one of the full-time providers resigned from Kitas anesthesia LLC, uh, to take a position somewhere else. So we moved from two to three dedicated providers effective September first. It will be down to two providers. They have identified a third provider who will be starting October thirty-first. So at the time of the contract signing, they thought they were in line to meet a brief provider benchmark and then later four provider benchmarks. They're not having very much success in recruiting to replace McKenzie. So I believe, uh, you know, on July fourteenth, we have our attorney sent to them what's called a pending breach letter saying that it's our understanding due to circumstances that affected September first, you will be in breach of contract. I believe that is going to be the case. They will be able to cover services because both Ken and Randy will be working full-time. Um, they have come to some sort of an agreement to extend McKenzie's stay with them to provide some time off for one of their other providers. So they're going to covele something together, I think, for September. Um, but they will technically be in breach of their contract, so we will continue conversations. Have you heard me think else that, Robyn? So, um, not feeling particularly, I, I, I'm feeling secure in that we will have service to cover the existing services. Getting, getting to that point where we desperately need to be, which is that fourth provider, so that we can run it in a dismal room, I think is gonna continue to be a challenge. Vicky, anything that I?
No, that's, I, the last record was McKenzie would agree to extend a little bit to help close that gap, but.
So it is a problem and we do have our physician or provider recruiter, um, helping them to recruit. But it's, at this point, not looking good. Um, moving on, any, we're still waiting.
I'm just gonna say, any doctors into the, it'd be increased demand for operating time. It's actually resulted in, it's a stress on the entity. It's, he brings so much business here and it's, it's so complex. It's, uh, really speaks for a greater need for anesthesia than we've ever had before.
Yeah, it, it's a key man problem. We are one person away at times, right? Not being able to provide service. Um, so we're still waiting the, uh, provision against open carry in public hospital in this building on this campus. We're still waiting for signage. Um, that will be true. It's still not clear whether that provision will extend to the entire campus or just the hospital building. So they're still continuing to work on that. We have similar issues up in hospital district two. So we don't think that provision will apply to urgent care or, uh, play on family medicine, but it will to the ambular station up there. So concealed care, if you're licensed, it's still approved, but open carries up.
Sorry to interrupt you, Julie, but, um, does it have to be where we regularly hold the meetings? Like what, we had, what if we had a revolving meeting and had it in the medical?
This is gonna be a bad time. Would you call it a revolver? Sorry, see myself out. Go ahead.
If it's just where we may, like, um, you know, I mean, we could, uh, if it, if it didn't apply to all the campus, couldn't we move the, uh, move our monthly meeting every month to different parts of the campus?
I don't know the answer to that. So it, the language is regularly held.
Oh, regularly.
What they were trying to do was cover the state capital and the capital grounds. Um, but at the end, they tweaked the language to a degree that AWPHD and our, our legal votes have determined that public hospital districts are included as well.
Well, if we want to have a, a regular, uh, board meeting every February in the Medical Arts Center, I'd be uh, in favor of it. Anyway, keep that in mind.
Okay.
So Julie, if a regular human being has a concealed weapons permit, they can bring it into the hospital?
That's always been the case. That's correct.
That sounds really scary.
Well, it's, I, it, it, and that is only true in public hospitals. So a not-for-profit hospital like Yakima Memorial Confluence can have a policy, you know, a weapons-free zone policy, but public hospitals have never been able to do that.
Is that legally binding or is that civil, is that a civil issue of somebody brings open carrots into a place that doesn't allow it, um, as a not-for-profit?
They can't, they can't, are you asking what is the jeopardy? It's like.
So if I was.
That wasn't enforced.
Right. If I was an open carry person and, and took it to a not-for-profit hospital, is that a civil disagreement, um, that the hospital had suing for or something? Or is that legally enforceable?
They would bar you from entry and that's immediately bar you open.
And so the police could get involved.
Yeah.
They tried to order to be pressed out.
That's really interesting. You can't take a gun into a school, but you can take it into a hospital, even though you have concealed weapon permit. That is, uh, quite something.
That's correct. Well, I will just say that AWPHD, of the two organizations, WISHA, AWPHD is a subset of WISHA memberships. There's never been the political will to make an issue of it because in many of the rural communities where PhDs have hospitals are, are very dedicated to their second amendment rights. So we have repeatedly had AWPHD called the question, do you want us to propose legislation that would make hospitals weapons-free zone? AWPHD has never had a consensus among its membership to do that. So this, and there are hospital workers that are really unhappy about it because of the, the response from their community. So it caught everybody off guard. It has been enforceable since June ninth. It has been in place. Um, we're waiting for the signage. Um, it, we were two months, WISHA and AWPHD were two months behind the ball, but we won't have. So there's that. Um, I do wanna mention speaking hospital district two. They are moving ahead of their C levies. Got went to the community levy committee meeting last evening. AWPHD through their membership, uh, hospital district two will be getting some help from AWPHD and, uh, educating the community on what a yes vote would mean for the hospital district levy as well as for the EMF levy up there. And we have our joint board meeting on September twenty-eighth, right? And, and I think we're ready to go, um, with the financial sustainability folks down here, speaking to the services that we see being extended. Rhonda's gonna lead the discussion about the master site planning across the list to two. And I particularly called out, um, Dr. Thomas, who is the clinic lead in Cleon to see if he would join us up there as well. So we have that to look forward to. Um, behind you, in case you didn't have a chance to see, I just, I, I wanna thank the board for sort of giving administration the latitude to spend as much time and, and focus on KCHN as we have over the last five years. I really do think it's coming to fruition. KCHN has received, I think, five point seven million dollars in grant funding for, um, things like opioid and, uh, SUDs and childcare. And we are really seeing that organization start to get some traction. So without sort of the latitude from KDH to have people like the chief medical officer be the chair of KCHN, I don't think we'd be there. And it's exciting to see them feel sustainable. Um, I also wanted to remind the board that we are coming up on one year with RPG. So probably in October, I'll ask the finance folks to do an overview of how that's working for us. If you'll recall, we saw, we previously did all the billing for the pro fees for hospital medicine and paid the staff there. Now they're doing the billing for pro fees. And we're paying, we no longer have those FTEs, but we are paying for it as a purchase service. So you see a, a change in both revenue and expenses. But I also think you'll see an increase in overall census and acuity of patients. So.
How does staff feel about, I, I know there was some uncertainty, believing that, um, people will maybe a little vulnerable with this change. I, nobody has approached me in recent, in quite some time to express any concern about it. So is that, is it?
We, we had some very genuine and quality sort of callouts from nursing. Um, that, so we gathered a group of nurses from CCU and that's third. Uh, Tricia actually with Dr. Martin, um, manages a regular call of RPG from sort of the medical staff side. Once we heard from the nurses, we incorporated some of their concerns. And it was, they were very concerned that the docs weren't getting that rest.
Was it before or after the transition?
After.
So after they observed for a while that expressed these concerns? Okay.
And again, brought forward in a very thoughtful and productive way. So I think they did some tremendous job of responding to that, going back, closing the loop, making sure that we've made those adjustments. Um, we also have them, so we, we built out a room for them to sleep in, but we also have, uh, dedicated a house to them. So I, I think it's working, it's working fairly well. Transition orders, um, are something we still need to continue to work on. So when you move a patient, a fairly generic patient from the emergency department back to med search, the emergency, there are orders to check them into band. I think that's how they, um, the nurses are a little concerned, I think, about how generic some of those are, that they like some more specificity. So we're gonna continue to work on that.
Did you mitigate the concerns with the nurses, with the physicians maybe being a little overworked? Are you standing up for that discussion?
Yeah, uh, when they first started, I, I must say, our, our census was full and running over. And it was, it was very busy and even some of those docs that came admitted, oh my gosh, this is a busy place. Uh, we have now settled on four to five, four group of docs that like it here, that work here. That's really helped, other than having a new doc every, every transition.
Including what's his name?
Yeah, so.
Dr. Booy, Larson, Dr. Larson. Dr. Larson was a great, uh, asset to, to the staff to know that, oh, there's someone that we know that we can approach. And he's been very responsive as well and has taken the lead, which is spoke volumes to the staff.
Yeah. So some of the things of, of the medical staff side, uh, initially there were challenges because of what somebody did. So there was feedback to be given. Do you give the feedback on the way out the door? Wait for them to come around again. What if they never come around again? But we have stabilized the grades. We have three core physicians and three kind of, uh, bench strength. And a, a couple more that are the, uh, full ripcord. But, uh, Dr. Larson has taken, taken the role as their lead physician. And will be incorporated into my physician leadership group. So I now have the lead hospitals that I can work with. And, uh, he suggested RPG, when he expressed an interest in hospital medicine, he would be an excellent resource for the needs-based locally. We don't have to wait for him to rotate that. We're gonna have a conversation with him. The other thing that we've done from, um, that it is a benefit of our building a more robust teachings, uh, uh, schedule is we're working with the medical schools and the residencies to have a, uh, an inpatient service for the, in addition to the RPG physician to have a resident and at times a medical student. Uh, if nothing else, that, the resident and medical student traditionally, the ones that get awakened at two in the morning. And the attending is, I remember in my training, I have been attending calling, you know, they're telling me, calling me for anything other than this unexpected death or a fire is a sign of extreme weakness. Um, the expectation is that the resident and student can manage most stuff. Uh, so that will help buffer, if we do have other surgeons, we've got extra bodies in place beyond relying on one provider. So there are a lot of things that we've been able to, to hold up the previous teaching services as a lax and identified lead. And Dr. Larson has a long demonstrated interest in education, so we're, that's something we now start to develop.
And so Dr. Larson's been in this role for a little while now. He's six, seven days. Was that, uh, recently he started?
Yeah.
As lead.
As lead. And, and, but as, as a hospitalist through RPG, he's obviously, he's comfortable with this role. He's enjoying it or?
So the way it started was he, being, Art Larson, when there were gaps in the schedule, he volunteered to fill them. And what he found was that it's much nicer work than public health officer. Nobody yelled at him, nobody to see him, nobody threatened his life, nobody came and threw stuff at his house.
And he really enjoys working with this now.
He's always enjoyed hospital medicine and he feels truly appreciative. And so when he started stepping back from public health, didn't feel he could. And so when he started stepping back from public health, didn't feel he could step back into primary therapy, decided that he was going to work for RPG for five days a month. When he made that decision, I saw that as an opportunity for their organization and ours. And I'm really delighted that we've been able to pull that off. I'm excited to be able to sit down with a lead hospitalist, a lead emergency room doc, and a medical director for clinic operations, and get a provider's perspective across the organization. The reason we haven't seen that in my board report is it happens since this winter presence.
So believe it or not, it's been a long time here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is that supported by RPG or?
Yes.
Is he still employed by KBH for other capacities?
Point one.
We're, we're offering him a stipend for a point one FTE as a director. And RPG pays him for the shifts that he does as a hospitalist. They are, his principal employer, and he's limited FTE with us.
And then he's just involved with the health department at this point, he does?
His point two.
Point two, okay.
Which is what it was pre-located. Actually, his point four is pre-located, but the information is, I do have to watch.
There is enough going on in human resources with benefits and WIS and other things that has managed to give you future, bring you all up to speed. And again, a thank you to the board. The market is moving so fast, you know, being able to make the broad decisions within operations is relatively helpful right now.
Thank you, this is another area that a lot has happened since I heard my board report, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak on it. You'll see in my board report now that I have continued with a kind of a category of employer of choice, to continue the conversations that we have all started together, making KBH a great place to work for our staff, and retaining our staff, and recruiting our staff. So I'd like to talk to you a little bit about some work we've done with benefit premiums, that was a conversation we've had before. We, and actually, the week of the board report, we actually just finalized our plan for 2022 rates that have been in effect since January, we have drastically reduced our premiums for staff. So for full-time staff here that don't have dependents, we already have, depending on their plan selection, many of our staff have no cost to their medical premiums. But we, what we have now, where we've decreased our premiums for our staff is with our part-time staff, we now include full-time being point seven five, which used to be point nine, but we use a very complicated system, but every point five is a different rate. And it really was stressful for our staff, especially full-time staff, who said, gosh, you know what, I really would love to apply for a part-time position with KBH, but I don't want to impact my benefits. We want that flexibility so that if, you know, we don't want them to choose to go elsewhere, we want them to have the options here and not have to feel like their benefits are at risk or fluctuating. So we have made a big change to count full-time as point seven five for premiums, and that will be no cost to staff on our core plan. The other rate is reduced family rates and premiums for dependents, all, every category, whether it's spouse, children, or entire family. And that, there's not a specific amount to really announce with that, because it does depend so much on people's FTE status, what plan they pick, so everyone has different rates, but it's really drastic savings for some folks, I mean, the percentage rate is from 15%, to less than 65% depending on what plan they selected. So we have increased the amount that we cover at KBH towards those premiums for family care. So we got, we've gotten great response on this, we talked about it in employee forum, and Julie sent out a very nice, I think, email, we got a, we got a compliment from somebody from the ED department that said, wow, staff are talking about this, they're very thankful for that. We just really want to show our staff that we're listening. Sometimes the work in progress can take a little while, we have to do planning and analysis and communication, but we're really excited for 2023 around compensation and benefits and some of the things that we have in store, kind of under our total rewards package and being employer of choice. And again, the specific, the specific changes will go into September 1st, which is earlier than normal, earlier we don't make changes until the next calendar year. What we've done is say, you're September 1st, when you get that paycheck that includes September 1st, you will see the amount that you're saving, that employee has to do nothing, it's not a qualifying event, so we don't have to have them re-enroll, they'll just get extra savings in that paycheck. And Marlo, a big thank you to Marlo in HR, because she's had to completely rework our system to do this, and our HR system by September 1st, and we're on track to do that. And so we're really excited to be able to offer that to our employees. We also announced, also something, we talked about an employer of choice together, around staff development, continuing education for our staff. We also announced that we would like to introduce the student loan reimbursement program for, across the organization. So we're developing that policy, doing some analysis right now, we're really working on our job descriptions as our guide for that, and some of the most common degrees that people really have to pursue to continue their careers in healthcare with us. And so we're going to do an analysis of that and some support and reimbursement for our staff on student loan reimbursement, and we're excited for that, some more to come when we get the specific policies announced. So those are just two things, again, we're working on a lot of other things, wellness, staff development.
Wellness is getting a lot of traction, which is, is fun. I think we placed our first order for three million step jackets for anybody.
Yes.
Of cheap, three million step, step challenge.
Oh, we totally need that.
Every time.
Wow.
We really have three million steps.
Sure, okay. And, and the Headspace app, which has been very popular, we just introduced that. And I think we have over 150 people who've signed up for that now, and it's, it's for mindfulness resources, stress management resources for our staff, and we purchase that for all of our staff here at KBH. So a lot of really exciting work happening, and we'll continue to update that in the board reports of the employer of choice.
And the Mindspace, that's an ongoing thing, like for the first year, something like that?
It's in your contract, so, you know.
You'll reevaluate that.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
That's available on?
Yeah.
Google Play and?
Yeah, yeah, people can just download it, we have some directions, and so people are enjoying it. And what's great is, I think some people shared that they even use it with their children, because, you know, they own it on their phone, they continue to give it families, and they look at sleep resources, and so it's really a nice family support resource as well.
And we have exercise classes on Tuesday evening and Wednesday morning that are just for KBH employees, and I do the Wednesday morning, it's a lot of fun, and for all sweaty. So it's a, you know, one of the things in the employee engagement survey, one of the drivers of satisfaction is having a friend at work. And so we're really trying to create those network situations where people can get out, and, and that, that concept of letting coworkers who are friends, you know, be something that helps decompress really is at the center of a number of these initiatives of wellness.
Do you need to sign up for a slot of the garage, or is it drop-in, or how do you?
They have an app, it's a really easy app to just go in, and it's listed on their schedule, it's KBH employee classes.
I say, oh, I want to do that, we have a minute.
And is there enough variety, so people on different shifts would have a shot at it?
We are, I, I don't know, but the, the thinking was that we would hit the times that would work for 12-hour shifts, folks. We need to go back and see if that's the case. As you know, the Wednesday morning, 7:00 AM, we have four or five people. I see nurses who work here leaving the 6:00 AM class, and I often ask them, and I said, oh no, you know, they just happen to drop into the 6:00 AM class this time. Tuesday evening is much deserved, they have 13 or 14 KBH employees who are coming in to exercise. Good stuff.
I'll also say that when we made these benefits changes, we worked with our union partners, they were really supportive and complimentary, we had a really great conference meeting with our nurse conference committee to kind of talk about timeline for negotiations, so we're all really excited to continue that work, and it's really positive meeting with our nurses, and they're really thankful for some of the things that we're doing, we got some good feedback from that, so.
You said that things, you mentioned that things kind of happen slowly, you have things that, you know, in order, things that have to be done. From my perspective, you seem tremendously nimble and moving on these things lately split, so I think that you guys enjoyed great chat.
And that is it, I am happy to answer the main question.
Do we cover, do we state?
Mm-hmm, I do have that. So if you recall, it was a couple months ago, we owned a four-story by owner sign property, 705 women, which is one of the properties adjacent to our campus. So Scott and I were at our school, and spoke with the Realtor, and I think they were very surprised that we got the level of interest that they did right away, I don't think, I think they were just kind of testing the waters. So we backed off, they showed it a couple times, they did work with the Realtor, I think. But it was just a couple weeks ago, they came back and said that they would accept our offer. So we have offered $364,000. Rhonda also went through the house and said it will be one of the nicer homes that we have over there, it's very well-maintained, and this has been their family home for a long time. They would like to stay in it for a year after we purchase it, which is fine as well. So Scott has a lease contract for them, so you have in front of you resolution 2209 to acquire 705 South Fifth Street for $364,000, and Scott's arranged the clothes that deal on August 31st.
I've never heard about that, where you buy a house and then people stick around for a year. Is there some, some sort of clause in there if they rip all the copper wiring out of the walls or something? Adjust, or, I don't know, how does that work?
You can have a clause that they're, they're making, and, but I, I don't think we have any concerns about the individuals that'll occupy the home, I think they'll care for it as well as a tenant as they did as an owner.
So since they're, they're going to lease the property back, how much money are we going to get back from them?
A thousand, a thousand dollars a month.
Oh, we'll get $12,000 back from them from the purchase price.
Yeah, that's a good read for them also. That was actually really a factor in doing the deal with us, they, they would have to move right away, and so that was, the ability to lease the property back for a year, and perhaps even extend it beyond that.
Yeah, I, I think stepping back and just not pressing too hard on these, but.
Are they still going to have insurance on the house, or do we have to insure it?
We will insure the house.
Why don't renters insurance? Yeah, so, yeah, possibly renter insurance. So do you need a motion to accept this?
Yes, the resolution 2209 is like action before you.
I move to buy this house.
Terry has moved to approve resolution 2209?
Yes.
Perfect. Seconded by Bob, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Passes.
Does it become property tax except once we own it?
Not, not in this case, because we're not using the house.
So as soon as we take it over, it will.
Okay.
And in fact, the last time, I think the county just went ahead and did it without us asking.
So since this house is more than what it was, probably the county has made it, is the property tax going to go up?
I don't know.
I heard they were crazy every year, so don't worry about purchase price, they just assess it year after year, year after year.
We have questions for Julie. All right, thank you, Julie. Operation and Street Nursing Officer, thank you.
Yes, my report starts on Friday. As you can see, PR has been doing, been doing a lot of education. It's the most I've ever seen since I've been here of the staff that have received their certified emergency room nursing certificate, which is very difficult to do. So that's, that's just wonderful. A lot of staff, as you notice, start there and they go to school and become nurses, so it's a nice little teaching platform. I don't have anything to add, other than the D and D that came in subsequently for that. We're thrilled to death and appreciate everyone's help on working with that initiative. We will be working on restraints next, and also our sitter companion role for those patients that require one-to-one observation. So we'll be working on those two projects. In fact, we've already started, but those are two big projects we'll be working on. Any questions at all?
Comment, this roster of accomplishments for staff is fantastic, I love seeing that.
Yeah, isn't that great?
Tremendous, so few else to know.
Yeah.
And I have a clarifying question, but I think I figured it out. The third paragraph under family birthing, where Sam, who became a member, was injured, that's the car accident, that somebody hit the building?
Yes.
Okay, so now I understand what that says.
Yeah, that's, was quite impactful to that department, so we should be touring that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Scott showed me a tour of the accident there, and that brick wall is probably going to have to be totally replaced because it's been dented, and I thought it was interesting, when I first started working at KBH, that used to be full of babies because that used to be the nurse, the nursery, and luckily, there's no nursery in where that car hit it, but it really amazing the damage that it did to that, to that area, and there's going to be a lot of.
Did it jump the curb and just go to the wall, or what? Is it typical, somebody thinks they're pressing the brake in your mind?
Not someone.
Because you think it's the brake and?
How is the individual doing now, are they?
He was treated and was later released, we observed him for a little while, but I think he's home again. But he did have some injuries, but not like threatening.
Security for everybody.
Yeah, that airbag deployed, and so I think there are some ramifications from that, but.
So due, due to the air, the damage there, is there any possibility that we might actually do some improvements in that, in that, into the building because that room's going to have to be repaired?
I, I know Stacy's done some discussion with Rhonda about that, and that is a storage area and an overflow area, so I think when, when it comes down to it, there will be some modifications probably, some cabinets not replaced, and, and mobile carts instead, that type of thing. But thank goodness, it was just, there was some equipment that we had to get replaced as a result, because it's stored back there and got, you know, broken or marred, so.
Yeah, I just saw, due to the accident, it opened up a door, do you have some possibility of?
Yes.
Do something else in your?
Conversations tonight. Absolutely, sorry.
Yeah, unfortunately, the time is just weird, because they, they spent the last two, three months previous to that, we putting in new flooring and new walls, and, you know, they were under construction for about three months, and then they just get it where they need it, and now they're back to where they're at. But it's okay, they're resilient, they're taking good care of their patient.
And so you, you commented on there's no drop in case numbers over the summer months like you usually would see, is that the surgical side of things that you're speaking of?
That's every site.
Every site. And so currently, we're not limited by the number of patients, we're limited by the providers and staff we have to do procedures.
No, we have been able to do everything, we haven't denied, other than those cases that are high duty and need to go somewhere, but we have not really said no to anything.
But you're confident in a few years, if we grow a little bit, there'll be efforts to fill those slots?
I think so, particularly the Akla states.
Yeah.
In a state of chaos, I hate to say that, but that, that's the truth. There's just no place for those patients and that population to go, there's nothing more.
Thank you.
Any else?
Great job.
Chief Ancillary Officer, Runo Holden.
My report is on page 37 and 38, I think, and I would add to, just because some things have been going on this week, it's been really busy in our county with finding out about developments going in, and last night I attended an open house for Fortera, and they are the ones that are putting in 115 houses at that old number four mine site in Roslyn, which is back behind City Hall, the library, and if you know where Artis, back along the Call Miners Trail, they have 30 acres there that they're planning to develop, and a lot of it is. And a lot of it is wetlands and so they're going to be having the Yakima Nation manage the wetlands. But they are putting in retail spaces, multifamily living and then single relevance home as well.
Do, do they have a timeframe to when they would build, fill out all those homes?
I don't have their timeframe yet, but I, I will have that by the time we have our.
Five years or 20 years?
Yeah, I would say it's going to be more like five. That's coming in quickly. And then, what was that? Let me go to, it was Tuesday night. We, Julie and I attended a city council meeting or actually it was a planning meeting about 47 degrees north. And the steps that we would have to take, or they would have to take and we would respond to as they do their remod, modified application to the city. They originally had a master site plan that was approved back in 2002 by Trend West. And so that has since been sold to a Sun Cadia, who sold it to New Sun Cadia, who has now sold it to Sun Communities. And so originally it was for the 1,384 homes and they are, and 75 acre business park. And now they are changing that to some manufactured homes. Today they presented, I went to another meeting today for the pre-application hearing, 493 single family homes, which are manufactured homes, 180 multifamily residences, 50 affordable housing units. And then they're also going to be doing a business center, which they are saying they will be really pushing for a grocery store, but also looking at any type of retail space for restaurants or dental offices or anything like that. And then they also plan to have 661 RV sites, which is, you can imagine what this is causing in the community, this particular plan compared to what it was supposed to be previously, which, which had 100 RV sites only to be used for the workers building on the property. And then after 10 years, those RV sites were going to be torn down. So now they're planning on 661, which is quite a lot, adding a lot to traffic and causing a lot of concern. With all of, with us, obviously, that's a mistake one and two, but this goal is a fire police for the community.
Those 661 RV sites, people, house families on permanent basis, but there's no.
They're saying no, they're saying that they're transient, but they did say today, the definition of transient is 30 days or less. But if they want to, if it stays fixed, they would check them out and check them back in again. So, you know, how many times can, every 30 days you just check in and out so you don't actually have to move?
How'd the meeting go?
Well, can I, so a couple of months ago, both hospitals, Chico one and Hospital District Two, sent a letter to the city of Clayall, asking for a, a seat at the table, saying, we have concerns as a hospital. We also have concerns as the EMS provider in Upper County. Hospital District Two, they acknowledged that invited us, although with about 72 hours notice to this meeting to say Hospital District One was not acknowledged. So we did not get to notice that Hospital District One was invited, so, sorry.
And then we, you know, like you said, we engaged an attorney for both hospital districts and he did attend Tuesday night's meeting and Julie and I are meeting with him first thing in the morning too, to kind of come up with a plan of what we want to look at. And we have also, I think I mentioned to you previously that shopping planning group had reached out wanting to talk about mitigation, that that was part of the hospital district too. They weren't even really looking at hospital district one at that point. So it looks to me like, I think the city is working with them very well. They, they are working on their final SEPA amendment, they're working on their final traffic study and then they will present those things and their application. And I think this process is going to start moving.
Do we think it will be approved as soon as?
I think it will be, there's a lot, like I said, a lot of community concern and, and service agency concern. But I think there's also a big push from the city that they, that they do want this, so.
And one step was also with the meeting on Tuesday, so they've got to get out some infrastructure and traffic.
Yeah, and Commissioner Asadich, Laura Asadich was there as well.
And the school district was there.
Was there today. I met John Boucher, the new superintendent for Clayall, Roslyn, it's wonderful. And they have also hired their own attorney to represent them, who has a lot of experience with line use mitigation. Already, you know, already making progress and they just hired her a couple of days ago. So that's encouraging and I'm meeting with him again tomorrow as well.
Yeah, so, so I think our question is, when does a modification become a brand new application? I mean, this is so different. And again, this was approved in 2002. So again, so it, it's so different than that approved application. Is it?
Sounds a little bit like when you go to a house with Owen, actually, with skyscraper.
Yeah, it's, so that's a little, and the other question, and I'm really impressed with what our attorneys bring forward in terms of possible questions and concerns. But the U G A up there clearly in 2002 said, we need 1,384 single family homes. If they're not going to address that need, I know the rules of the U G A, they need to be able to tell you where are we putting those 1,384 homes. So that's again, one of the things that we're hoping our attorney will bring forward.
And I think Hospital District Two is really concerned about the tax base with a manufactured home as opposed to what it will be if they were doing a fair market value with the condition, or traditionally go home, it would have a lot higher value than what it would be with these manufactured homes going in.
And unfortunately, the way the, the process is set up, the agencies with concerns essentially just respond. So, so the developer lays out what they think the mitigating issues are and what they need to do and we have an opportunity to respond. We really need to flip that script and say, you know, here's, we have 4.7 billion dollars in property values in Upper County. Here's the average value of one of those 1,384 homes. This is what the value of the current project would be and we want the difference every single year. So we're trying to, to flip it so that we're telling our story as opposed to responding to theirs. And they really are at the point where they're going, well, we'll build, we'll buy an ambulance. So it's a good answer. So it's, it's an interesting process.
Oh, any other questions on my report?
So, so back when I was working at the hospital, Jim Allen, who's going to retire next year, he used to do a lot of help in working with like emergency things we need to do and a lot of other things. Is he still doing that?
No, he isn't, he was fantastic at that and did a great job. He's not doing that any longer. He was really good at it and loved it, but it has since transitioned to Michelle Worrall. And I'm, I'm so glad during COVID that Jim wasn't taking away from us in the respiratory therapy department because that was a lot more for emergency preparedness and Michelle did an outstanding job.
Okay, all right, because I, I was just thinking, because he retired, that would open up another really big need. Because I know he was doing a great thing. I, I had a friend at the college that he was working with a, a few years ago and he was really happy with how well Jim did that, did those things.
Yeah, he's very, very good at it. And it's a year from September, this one, he's looking at retiring, so 2023. A good lead time for us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, Marla. Chief of Clinic Operations, Stacy Alena.
Okay, so my report is on page 38 and 39. I don't have anything to add since this was written, so I'm open to questions if you have any.
You're a few months into this, you get settled in?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am, we're getting the team together. We've got the two new clinic managers to replace Rachel and Jennifer that left and our administrative assistant just started today. And we have a new PSR development coordinator. So today marks the first day the whole team is all together.
And the new coordinator is?
Elena Swan, she was one of our PSR leads and she came from the E N T clinic. So my next report will have a little more information about Elena and also our administrative assistant.
And she's replacing?
She's replacing Passion, that's what I thought.
Is, is Passion staying with us in a different role?
No, she took a position with Carrie and Moses, I think. I think she took a behavioral health, or a command position.
Wonderful.
I, I actually fully intend to get Passion back. Just wait for it. I will say, Dr. Martin and I both attended the family medicine Ellensburg provider meeting this week and they acknowledged sort of how the PSR situation is uplinking out, that things are getting better. It feels like momentum, it feels like improvement as opposed to putting out fires. So it was a really positive meaning. Anyway, Stacy always goes to those, but I haven't been to one except my Zoom in a while. It was nice to hear that and see how powerful the program is.
I have one quick thing for Stacy. You just mentioned in passing this presentation on the M A apprenticeship program.
Yes.
One of the things, when I was president, one of the things that, that we did was I would write little sort of cards of congratulations, I think Bob, you did that too, to people graduated from the program. And I don't know if you still are planning to have celebrations for, you know, small celebrations for people who graduate from that program, but I also went to a couple of those. And I think just keep, keep us in the pipeline on, on the people. I know you always, in your report, you, you will say, you know, who's graduating. But I think it's good for that sort of personal touch for the president, in this case Erica, to, to sort of maybe send a little notes congratulating them and, and, you know, attending if there are little celebrations or anything. Anyway, I just wanted to put that on your radar.
I will do that, we've got a couple graduating in September. So we're going to be heavy at for the rest of the year. We've got some in September, some in October, and I think we've got a pretty good group in December. So I will make sure I let you guys know.
Back with names and.
They agree. Come to the, because we still do the celebrations, so if you want to come to the celebrations and.
That's our question.
Send us an invite, we love to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
How flattering for Shelley to be, for them to request application for information.
And all of the documentation and all the forms that she's developed to go along with that program. I think one of the other hospitals went, you think you could train our MAs and then we'll just take them when you're done with them?
It's sad.
That might be, I, we're looking forward to actually filling so many of our open positions. If we get to a point that we've, we are, we really don't have a lot of vacancies, that might be something we can discuss. Because one of the smaller organizations said, I only have five MAs, so it's really hard for me to train to get into this much detail with them. So that might be something we look into too.
This is the nice thing, I think, about the collaborative because for the C N A development program that we're looking at, one of the hospitals in the collaborative also is willing to share with us. So it's a nice reciprocal, you know, supporting that collaborative.
Got any other questions for Stacy, comments? All right, thanks Stacy. Dr. Kevin Martin, Chief Medical Officer.
My report's on page 40. If you think so, I'd like to highlight and I've already covered a lot of the developments that happened since I wrote this a week and a half ago. But under hospital capacity, it is worth calling out, the memorial has had to eliminate some services. They are no longer screening endoscopy and a lot of those folks have been cut our way. They're no longer admitted to their own hospice program. That all impacted us because we're basically defined by county laws, but I think it speaks to some of their organizational struggles.
That's a temporary minimum annual limit? Or are they shuttering their program?
I believe they're shuttering and except for cottage.
Really?
There are, there is another hospice organization in Yakima County, but they have shuttered their hospice and their palliative care program. They've also shuttered their vascular surgery services with a stated intent to resume. I did have a conversation with their C M O where he was asking to make referrals for some of their less complicated cases. The other thing that I, that hasn't been mentioned that I want to call attention to is changes in my staffing. I jingled after six years. We commented at strategic planning retreats, we commented in this forum about the growth that we've had and services we've added. A lot of that success is the result of his work. And he will be missed. His success is not going to notice, he was aggressively recruited and successfully hired by the memorial.
We extended his impact.
In the interim, with as much urgency as we have around a lot of our recruiting needs, especially around anesthesia and internal medicine, I did not want to let that position stand vacant. So Catherine Brunner has agreed to serve for three months as an interim. We have, position posted, we have several excellent candidates that have applied. Our plan is not to interview until probably October and announce a hiring decision sometime in November.
She's definitely demonstrated that she can step right up and be incredibly successful.
Well, I'm waiting for the task that we give her that she can't handle.
Keep her humble.
Yeah, because from, from her initial role in events to essentially running the vaccination programs routinely, she has demonstrated that she is a very, very capable professional and a very motivated woman. The nice thing is that we've been able to attach her to Mitch for the last two, three weeks. And so she has been picking his brain. I've encouraged her not to use too far to pick, but I, I think that she will make sure that we don't lose traction. Good thing we do have some leads on some young, soon to graduate family medicine candidates that are finishing their residencies, some with local roots that we're excited maybe in part of our long term. And one other, since this went to press, we also have, we have made an offer to another pediatrician in addition to the one who's already accepted. And we're just in negotiations on that as well.
Good job.
I don't think he's zooming in, but he was more of us.
I, I told him I'm very, I'm absolutely no ill will and I'm going to say the same for his employer.
He's a little mental, Carrie Youngblood, I mean, it's fair to say, since she, she's living.
She is.
So my memorial quick gift of praise is down there. Staffing and capacity, mostly I think it's their nursing shortages. Bear in mind that in addition to having achieved their status as the busiest emergency department in the state, they've spent more than their fair share of time since the beginning of the pandemic, gracing the pages of the New York Times. I think it's taken control on their staff. I think they've been faced with greater challenges with retention than we have. We were able to come through the pandemic without furloughing anybody, they were not able to do that. They've been in, we've been in incident command for, Michelle would know, but probably on the order of 800 days. They were in incident command a year before we were anticipating, actually two years before we were anticipating the hospital closure of the Sria Regional. So they have been on a disaster footing for nine and five years. You know, that's exhausting and I think they need to hold on to workforce.
I remember thinking of the crush that was going to happen as Sria closed. I mean, this was just, just mere months before anybody knew a little bit, but.
Well, and they were aware of it and had been preparing for it for at least a year before it actually happened. It, it was kind of, we know, we know the volcano is going to erupt, we don't know what, but we need to be ready.
Sure.
And having, having national notoriety for their COVID volumes, that's a tired workforce.
The volcano and then tsunamis. The volcano and then tsunamis and, yeah.
What is the first ones?
Passionately, I already know.
Okay.
Are there any questions for Dr. Martin?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Dr. O'Brien, just wanted to say hi if you're not on the. Just wanted to acknowledge you.
How are you doing so far?
All right. Scott Willander, Chief Financial Officer.
Well, thank you. After carrying Vicki and Stacy, you'll know that we've got a really good financial report with species that we've been and with, if you start on page forty-four of the report, you can, you can see, uh, see some of the reasons for the positive financial results. I have a pleasure before the we're, um, a bunch of admissions on line one, on patient days, line two, deliveries, line three into line seven. As you, as you look at overall surgery minutes in and outpatient and surgery cases, there is more inpatient than cases that were above budget than outpatient or a little below budget, but basically in total, they all trend to be pretty close to budget and likely exceed it. ER was very busy. Urgent care was very busy. Lab was very, very busy. And, uh, you know, as you look at the lab volumes year to date, a hundred and sixty-three thousand tests and look at prior year, a hundred and sixty-five thousand. You know, that was in prior year. There was a whole lot of COVID going on and we were, and those receiving tests with COVID. And, uh, there's a lot of other lab work going on. So lab is, uh, lab is doing well. X-ray is, was busy. The only, uh, the only rehab, their, their, their negative number is due to staffing. And Rhonda has hired some, five or at least one, and one therapist and they've got another contract with them. Clinic, clinic volumes were, uh, Stacy, were very, very busy. So with all of these positive numbers, I can't, they're not a whole heck of a lot of things that influence the financials in a, in a very positive way. So if you go now to page forty-seven, you'll see the results. These are very positive numbers. Inpatient revenue was ahead of budget, uh, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Outpatient was below. Professional fees had by three hundred for positive variance for the month of four hundred and sixty-seven. And as we look at year-to-date inpatient, uh, over budget by three point three million dollars. This is a common, this is RPG is a factor in this. Additional specialists that KPH has hired is a factor in this. And so those are, those are some of the influence of that decision a year ago to, to go with RPG. We are, um, some of those admission stats and patient days are because of that decision a year ago. So I think it was a difficult decision. It's been a, a busy year for that group, but I would commend making that difficult decision to do. It was, I believe it was the correct decision for the organization, community. Contrashles, um, uh, we have, uh, we're being paid by, uh, at a better rate than we had expected due to, to some of the, the payers that we're not contracted with and some of the shifting that we have. Other operating revenue for the month, for the month was good. We received eighty-five thousand dollars from the second portion of the A's grant, layer eighteen for some of the provider work that Catherine did for the Catherine Doster contract. A shift grant of twelve thousand dollars and the money for Amanda, nineteen or about two thousand. So that offset some of the, uh, the, uh, the shortfall that we've, our experience and continue to experience with three forty B. And then expenses were key into our budget and, uh, well, the, uh, and the only, the only real number there that is a concern is the temporary labor and, uh, but as Vicki had said, a temporary labor is allowing us to continue to do cases and do work and serve the community. And so that temporary labor is the, again, uh, a benefit to KPH and the organization in total. So we posted a, um, an operating income for the month of almost seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. We're at four point four million to be good for the year-to-date with a positive variance of one point two million. We are not operating miraculously. They have an unrealized gain on KPH's invested investments. So we have a million dollar month and year-to-date we're at three point five million dollars. So just a very good financial statement. And then if you go to the previous page, page forty-six, our, uh, our days in AR with the additional patient volume, we've done a little bit. Sixty-two days, our days cash also increased. Our payer mix is, uh, continues to be favorable and positive in the UTE. So I am just pleased to present the, uh, excellent statements and from what I hear with, uh, Wisha, this is not the case at State Lives. We're actually good of a net. Not all hospitals are doing as well as we're doing.
Yeah, I think, um, there was an article that Providence is putting just short of a billion dollar loss.
Any questions about, um,
Some of our investments, we don't know. I mean, there's no objection how much we're going to get from the rich kind of like someone's selling bonds and we get that portion of the.
You know, they have a coupon rate and we'll get that coupon rate when they get to work. I, I actually did give some of the excess money that you'll see in this next month. I'll ask an additional four, four million dollars in, uh, in marketable securities. But they're on a short-term basis, uh, one for ninety days and one for a hundred and twenty days. And we are, yeah, I think two point five and two point seven percent interest return on those on a short-term. And so as, um, as, as the list, as you, John, look at that list, you, we, we have a very strong cash position and the investments, we'd be able to let those investments mature and when they mature, we'll be able to invest in that at a rate that we've got enough.
And why the short-term? For these two recent investments?
Yes, to make sure.
Stay flexible?
To be flexible. It's just not a.
It's been so long since we've got interest rates.
And I felt pretty good. I thought, I thought those rates were pretty good.
And it's good to say, we're all excited about a few points.
It's embarrassing to say that I've got some paid a quarter of a percent and, you know, a year ago and we did it, we thought we're okay. It's sad. So any questions about the financial statements? There is, um, on page each fifty, there is a, uh, a notice from Etna and this relates to ER running. And, um, Etna is, is adopting a policy of, um, using how the profits are quoted to pay for the facility charge also. And the rural collaborative, this is, this is an issue that we took it exception with, with Kaiser. We felt like it was not in accordance with the terms of the agreement that we had. And, uh, so we had objected to it with Kaiser and the rural collaborative is objecting to this with, uh, with Etna and we will, in addition, the collaborative will be writing a letter and communicating with Etna about their opposition to this. They think it is considered a breach. We will also be sending a separate letter notifying them that we consider they need to, we will consider this a breach also. And we will not be sending a notice of termination at this, this point, but, uh, it may, it'll be a strong forceful letter indicating that we don't consider it correct.
Was that effective in this policy?
Okay, less.
Do they do these things, Scott? Do you have to clear this through the insurance commissioner of the state?
They did, they, in theory, they should. They can do it as a matter of payment policy, not contract language. And so they can change policy without OIC approval, but they, uh, they have to get the contracts approved by OIC. So that's how they, that's how they go, uh, they attempt to backdoor it.
It would be interesting to see what the insurance commissioner's stance is on.
The insurance commissioner says not to lose. The insurance commissioner has an insurance background. He's not been a friend of hospitals providers, in my, in my judgment. And then there's also an article, um, other hospitals, the AHK is also taking issue with some of the payment practices and business practices of insurance companies.
I know I've said this before, but like when I was on the policy board at ACH, I was really frustrated that they didn't, they could temper line with the plans of most of the systems' own health plans as well. And I think that's why they felt conflicted, but it's clearly gotten to the point where, um, they're fed up as well. So they sort of redirected their attention on plan policies and really, really badly.
So that said, we will keep the finance committee informed of what we're doing with this, but this is just to make sure the, the all the board members were aware of what's going on. And then you have on page fifty-two and fifty-three have Mitchell's report. And Mitchell was the million dollar man and he has notified you that, uh, he considers himself the four million dollar man, you know, with these recent grants that he's, uh, and, you know, the, uh, the one with the daycare is an example of some of the really positive work that the work is going on to benefiting not only KPH, but KPHN community. The next item on page fifty-four, fifty-five.
Scott, real quick, yes, question about the grant. The one in red on the first page of grants that was denied seems to match it with a very similar one on the top of the second page that we just applied for. Is it a similar type thing or did we go back in for a second attempt or maybe you don't know that information? You're just looking at the chart like I am.
I'm not sure.
But we're, we're so, so the, the one in red, the FIC.
On the same from the bottom?
One point two million. And the first one on the second page of grants is also one point two million from the same group. So I, I just wondered if it was a different grant that just coincidentally happened to be the same size or we got a second attempt at the one we got denied. But again, it may not be so here.
I, I don't know the answer. I think, um, one of, Dr. Martin.
First, uh, one of these planning grants on a cycle. So we got denied on one site, one I believe we're reapplying in the subsequent cycle.
Do you learn something when you're denied? When you go back again, you're, you can target a little bit more accurately?
Yeah.
Perfect, great. Yeah, so there's a learning process with all the denials and, uh, and Mitchell's actually batting average is actually increased. I think it was a three or four hundred percent hitter at one point and now he's moving up that five hundred percent.
Oh, made material.
Okay, page fifty-four, fifty-five is a, we have some surplus equipment that, um, is, uh, no longer needed by the hospital. So this is a resolution twenty-two dash eight to, uh, to surplus this.
I think you noted one of them was the analyzer was going to be donated to, uh, an organization that gets some use out of it.
Yes, there's, I think they'll come and pick it up for us.
Heritage University?
Yes, Heritage University. They have a med tech and lab program, lab training program. So they, they analyzer on site, they do quite a bit of mission training right on, on the campus.
Looks doing well. You never know. Do you need to motion on this? I'm going to do. So I would move to approve, uh, the resolution twenty-two dash narrow eight.
This by John? Seconded by Bob. All in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
All of those, please say nay. Pass this. Yeah, one or two more, maybe seven more.
And on the, um, the next page, starting on fifty-six, but I think I probably left you all the way to pages sixty-eight and sixty-nine. This is a, uh, a document, and this is a planning document or a, a document to take the orthopedic clinic space and, and build it out to elevate it, elevate it to, and bring it up to hospital-based centers. And, um, it will add a, um, it will add an X-ray machine, but it, this is, this space is in the Metta Flex. And it will, um, you can see on page sixty-eight that, uh, the, the expansion of it, it will expand into, from existing orthopedic space into spaces used by and then it, on page sixty-nine, it will take all of the, um, the bricks that we have, cobbled walkways in and out, which Dr. Hibs calls the walk of death. And so it will replace that with heated concrete. And, um, and so this, this work is, this is, this is the design work to, uh, to do this, this project. And then we would have a, uh, once this design work is, was completed, we would bring this back and it would go to bid, the reconstruction portion.
Scott, on page sixty-nine, the, um, uh, the vertical pinkish or reddish area, the walkway. Yes, that's not showing any green work along that edge. I thought those bushes also were kind of impede the path there. Were they going to be trimmed back?
Cause I asked, is that's where the road goes?
The answer is that those bushes are coming out.
Okay, so, but the other areas do have green indicated. So I just was confused. If, if it goes out, we don't have to put green, but if they're doing, adding something, they put green in on the, on the legend or?
I think Ron, do you want to address John's question if you would?
Yeah, that, um, walkway in between the buildings, those existing plants will come out and we, the sidewalk will get widened. We, you know, we haven't got a final plan on that, but we know, we may leave a foot or so of plantar space just to get some green in there.
And Ron, you were saying that this new walkway will be heated so it won't develop ice in the wintertime? Is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes.
And will it be lighting or is there enough lighting currently for evening walks back there?
Um, there's a couple of dark spots in there and, and that is going to be addressed in this, yes.
Thank you.
As addition to, um, a camera, um, back towards three D and E, which is where Ortho's at. We'll, we'll do some more camera coverage up there. So as we've been remodeling those, I've been adding them and just kind of working my way back with that.
I would just point out, we do have a, a currently a path that goes out to chest line. See that that's not going to be replaced. That is, um, it's, it's not the most secure setup right now, but we are trying to create a, a space that we can control.
That's a little blue segment right there. And so that is going to get a gate which currently doesn't have any sort of obstruction.
But the deterrent bricks will remain.
It'll encourage people to take another round.
Probably gate that little aisle way at, at both ends, just so people can be in there.
The total cost of estimated design work for this is two hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred and ninety. And then with that, we would have, uh, fines that we use to go to bid for the renovation work.
And the goal to be ready to go to bid would be a partial review.
John, or, uh, uh, Rhonda, the.
John, or Ron, the timing on when it would go to bid?
We're looking at approximately February.
Questions for Ron or myself?
There's no stars here, but we're voting on this, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other conversation before we, before I ask for a motion?
I'm making a motion that we move from basic service preparation to go to bid.
Seconded by?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That passes. That'll be exciting to see those changes.
Motion.
Go ahead, one last one.
All right.
The next slide, we have on page seventy-one to purchase two G ultrasound units that will be used by the CRAs and Dr. Zan Vaskil surgeon to locate veins. We currently have leased older, seven-year-old leased ultrasound machines that are being used. And so these would be new machines that would replace waste equipment. And there is, we've changed our overall philosophy about leasing. And it is, in most cases, a less expensive, long-term decision to own, own equipment than it is to lease it. So these are, AB normally is really good about budgeting for this. He was not aware that these items were leased, and so that's the reason there was no budget for it. But this is, the leases up on these items and so where do these units, where were they before VAS? They were, one of them was used down in Med Surge, correct, Chicky?
ICU, right.
ICU. And I don't think the other one was.
One was just inserted.
One was?
It had one.
Scott, can you clarify how this is written? ABH has leased the existing ultrasound unit, so that's singular, an annual cost of a little over ten thousand for seven years.
So that's for one, one piece of equipment?
And we, we've been leasing more than one. We've been leasing two. So we would double that amount, so we paid a hundred and forty-four thousand and so for the two for the last seven years. Where if we bought it, like currently, it's a little less than a hundred thousand to buy it.
Yes, correct.
Yep.
Do you need a vote?
No.
Spend some money. Spend some money. Spend some money. Well, I moved it. Do you need a motion for it?
Yes, please.
Okay, I move that we buy the ultrasound.
Okay, it's been moved by Terry. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Matt to approve the capital expenditure request for GE ultrasound units, two of them. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That passes.
Thank you so much. The next item is on page seventy-two, and it's for three G panda warmers. And the, this purchase is the, the infant warmers that we have are wall-mounted into the, into the family birthplace wall. And it, we are no way, no longer able to get parts for the existing infant warmers. And so this, these, these three pending units are mobile. They would be moved into the room, or they would stay in the room. But they're mobile at this point. And then there is a second phase of this that we will need to change the oxygen in the room to, and the cabinetry to fit these panda warmers, to make them built in like the existing infant warmers. So, but the reason that we're accelerating this purchase at this time is because the, we had one of the warmers fail. And as the panda warmer is the best option in, to, to get by on a temporary basis. But there's going to be some additional costs for that oxygen plumbing and building these into, permanently mounting them to the wall.
Having them freestanding for a time, isn't it going to be a difference?
It's the, if, I'm going to let
Not really. Currently, I don't know if you two are down there, you can pull this unit out of the wall. So like Scott said, you can't support that anymore. So a temporary fix is to get three new ones, but these are mobile. And until we get the cabinetry up to, up to speed, it's not going to be, most rooms are rather large. It's only in the three LDRP rooms, so you can move them around. Actually, they're kind of a little excited because right now they can't move it, so things get a little squishy in there if you have multiple people.
So even after they're in their permanent configuration, are they still detachable and mobile at that point?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm assuming not.
Okay.
It'll be all one unit.
How many units are in there currently?
Each room has one, so there's three.
Three, and these are end of life?
Beginning of life resuscitation. Specifically for newborns.
Will they, will they have any value to anybody once we pull them out? So they'll, they'll be just surplus to?
They're not supported.
You can't get parts of them.
Page spreads, go.
We go. Yeah.
Okay.
And I would move to approve the expenditure for the G D panda warmers, three units.
It's been moved by John.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Terry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. It's like we get removing the warmers. All right.
Thank you. And then on page seventy-three, this is in anticipation of the surgery, the board approving the surgery expansion in the future, in the next, in the next year. There, we're going to lose parking space behind the hospital and then also between the hospital and ER. And so the grass field between the internal medicine clinic and Manitoba, this, this is, we would put parking in that spot at an estimated cost of three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars to do that. So to, so that we've been just parking when we do the, we do construction for the overall expansion.
Parking spots, do we anticipate this? Will you, Ron, number of parking spots?
Thirty-three.
I think, and I, well, I think because of high likelihood, we're going to improve the expansion, we could use the parking.
And has some of the design work for this already been accounted for?
Design's already been?
Yeah. The design's done, so we should be ready to move forward with this portion.
It's, yeah, it's actually a segment of the campus project. It was designed in that, and so we're moving ahead with that segment.
And when, when would you break ground on this sort of project?
Well, we, as soon as we possibly can, we're waiting on the city to give us final approval. Just today, we got the, the final document that they needed. So I, I would anticipate getting that approval next week, and then we can go.
I'm trying to remember, is there a large tree in that space? Do we, do we keep the tree where ground, or if the tree comes up?
They're ongoing. I think there's two large trees.
Come out. The only thing that's going to stay is there's a power transformer that's there that would be really involved to move, and so we'll work around that.
So you'll work around what?
The power transformer in that.
Okay. How long do we think it'll take to complete this project?
Um, it'll probably be into October.
Okay.
October of this year or next year?
This year.
It's going.
Why, later, I'll say, we didn't ask what year.
I watched this whole house, so that's kind of the timeline. I think Ron should be working on it. The project should be done in a forty-five minute. This whole house.
Right. Would you put that up? We take, we, we believe we're under the, with just the contract and price excluding tax, we're just below the threshold. The small works.
Okay, it would stand up to an audit, because I know one of those things is that you're asked to break things apart and try to slip a bunch of them underneath.
As you know, we can roll up the lawn there and sell it to somebody as lawn.
Contractor might need all that.
Yeah. If you look, I need some.
Can I get a motion for this capital expenditure request?
Go ahead, Matt.
All moved.
All right. Moved by Matt.
Second.
Seconded by John. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. I forget the parking lot, too.
Last on page seventy-four, and then seventy-five, and six, and seven is the we're going to operate G orthopedic clinics for period of time. And the asset of ONW has leases space from KVA in the Medicare Center Building. And that is where Dr. Tony Longo is practicing currently. And so they're ending their lease with KVA on September thirtieth of this year. Which with ONW's indicated an interest in selling these clinic assets to KVA. And so the, it's, in dealing with decisions, practices, you have to, you can only acquire things at their firm right of value. So we have the, an appraiser evaluate the value of all these different assets. And it came up with a total value of about fifty-eight thousand eight sixty-eight. And sales tax, it takes it to a total value of sixty-three thousand six ninety-five. This is the high end of these assets. There are a few of these pieces of equipment that ONW wants to retain. And so Stacy and I are going to meet with ONW on the twenty-ninth after Dr. Longo's last day with ONW. We'll go through the list and select the items that we're going to purchase. The largest item here is a, an X-ray machine valued at forty-four thousand five hundred. There's about three thousand dollars of additional X-ray related parts. And then they have exam tables. They're valued, four exam tables that are valued at twenty-four hundred dollars. And then we put this mislaid is, we went by all key assets that ONW is indicating selling to KVA.
So they're, that they are likely to sell the X-ray unit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's, I think, seven years old, lightly used X-ray machine. So it has, it has life in it.
So this is the maximum amount you would spend, but you'd expect it to be a little lower because of you something's out of the list.
Yep. And I guess in theory, June has the authorization, this is just below her threshold, so.
Why don't you?
Not including the sales tax. Is your threshold?
Sixty-five, sixty-five.
Oh, it's way over there, yeah. Oh, for that in mind, I'd move to approve that.
All right, it's been moved by John.
Okay.
Seconded by Terry to approve the capital expenditure request for clinic assets of ONW. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That passes.
Thank you. And the last item I have is the finance committee. We have a, a presentation about, from Piper Sandler, about debt and financing a portion of the surgery expansion that we would do. So we're, we were looking at a couple of options, a two fifteen-year, a fifteen-year option, a twenty-year option, where we would advertise the debt as a straight line, pay it off at a straight line. And there's a wraparound option that, where you can pay it less, less principal upfront. And then as you move into the debt schedule, as we retire some of our older debt, and the principal would accelerate. The finance committee is, was interested in more the straight, the straight line amortization. And so we will have three options to consider next month. One, a ten-year amortization, a fifteen-year amortization, and a twenty-year amortization of fifteen million dollars of debt that would, that would be related to the expansion that that project is, if the board decides to proceed with that project. And so there's ongoing work related to that, that if, so I guess there'll be two decisions. One about whether or not you want to proceed with the expansion. And if you do proceed with that expansion, do you want to finance a portion of that expansion? Or do you want to, to kind of just operations? But I, I think the sense of the finance committee is that this is a, a debt-worthy type of transaction that we would, I think we would be well certified, considering to issue debt for about fifty million dollars.
That's one five, though. It almost sounds like fifty the way it came.
One five.
It's like fifteen and fifty, you're really slippery.
Yeah, yes. One five.
Yeah.
One five million dollars.
One more than one four.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we, several months ago, we looked at, you know, assuming that the project cost was in the neighborhood of twenty-seven million, we looked at what would the organization look like if we did it all over again? What would it look like if we debt financed the whole thing, including equipment and everything else? The middle proposal, which is where I think the finance committee has settled, is let's finance the construction portion, the bricks and mortar piece. So that's what you'll be seeing. The step after that, when the board sort of says, you know, give us a ten-year, they will take it out and price it. So once they take it out and price it, we'll have the sort of true in the moment, this is the interest rate that you'll be paying on a ten or fifteen.
I think currently, the estimate for interest rate is coming in
The fifteen-year, the estimate was three point seven five percent interest fixed for fifteen years, or at twenty percent fixed, three point nine percent.
Twenty-year fixed?
Fixed, three point seven.
We don't have it here. We added that.
We added, we added a ten-year option, too. I'm guessing it'll probably be a couple points.
Just survey those, there's long discussions for this stuff. We really spent a lot of time wrestling with what the positive effects, like changes are, so that when we bring it forward, we'll feel it's been well discussed, well thought out, and hopefully everyone will be able to support that research as much as.
So can I just sort of tee up for the board? We're trying to bring this debt discussion alongside the bid process for the expansion project, which Ron tells me in the next ten days or so, we'll be ready to go to bid, correct, sir? So, so the bid, the project itself will be ready to go out to bid. They want to give it about a month bid time. And during which time, again, we'll be having the, if we go forward with this, having one to debt finance it. Ron is going to need a special meeting to evaluate and accept the apparent low bid. So it will not time with our September four meeting. So we'll probably be looking at early October for a special meeting, so we'll get that, that low bid on the project.
Will the bids be open during that meeting? Or they'll be open maybe previously, and that meeting will be used to commit to want to get all of those things?
So once the bid, so we open the bids, and, you know, we can do a draw and do a ceremonial opening of the bid. The reason we call it the apparent low bidder is the architect and Ron will then take those bids away. They'll make sure that they're bonded the way they're supposed to. That, that's the easy stuff. But qualifying the contractors, qualifying all the subcontractors, making sure we want these people working inside our building, that's something they, they take some time to do. Is that correct, Ron?
You're right, right on the money.
So you'd call a special meeting after that, because you know what you're proposing?
No, what, it's, you will, you will be No, what, it's, you will, you will be approving the apparent low bidder.
I see.
You'll get another phone call from us if that falls through, and they say, we've got some issues with their subs or something.
It's really exciting.
It's exciting.
Right on the horizon. Are you all? Are you exhausted over there?
He spent nine hundred, five hundred, nine hundred thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars. So, that's a lot of money.
That's compared to next one.
I know.
You're warming up.
Or warming up.
Thanks, okay. Um, any other questions for Scott? Ross, hold that. Okay, thank you very much. And then Community Relations Report is, I heard it was Michelle, she's on.
Hey, Eric, yeah, I'm here. Um, yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, sorry, I did not, was not able to get a report in. Um, I've been gone for the last week and a half spending my baby after college. Um, and prior to that, we were working diligently on the internet and the policy updates, so I do apologize. Um, so in the community relations side, um, we're going to obviously be one person down, thank you, Dr. Martin. But it's a great asset for the physician recruitment, so life is good there. Um, we did just complete all the video work for our providers up in Cleland. That took place over the last couple of days, and so we should be having new provider videos to be showing you at the next board meeting. Um, and outside of that, um, just, I was literally just trying to kind of catch up from my time gone, um, working on some initiatives up in HD2. Can I, can you think of anything that I'm missing up right now, Julie?
Let me think. Lot of work being done between, uh, Michelle and, and, and the, we need to meet our obligations for D and B policy updates. Um, and Kirsten, who's the new social media person that Michelle has engaged, is responsible for just the pace at which we're updating our social media. And just, um, in the internet, I believe they, she and Jan Powell manage that. And it's very fresh and new and moving really, really quickly, so it's, it's fun to watch.
Yeah, they, they've done a great job keeping on top, so we, we're really kind of getting some, um, some tasks ironed out, and, you know, Jan's our digital graph, our graphics, and Kirsten is doing all of our digital work. Um, and it's just, they're really kind of running, I, I'm giving them direction, and they're running with it and keeping things going while I had been out. And so I just can't say enough about how wonderful they are. I'm also doing a lot of work right now on the recruitment side, pairing up with Dr. Martin and his team. We've got a conference coming up in September, um, where we'll be there doing more recruitment activities. So really working on graphics and website and, um, making things approachable when people come to us, and then following up with those leads and seeing, uh, whether or not that's, you know, i- is that providing a return for us? So Kirsten's setting up all of those tracking mechanisms and things like that.
Michelle, do you have any updates for the celebration event in December? Any movement on that?
So we had, um, had a preliminary talk with, so Catherine and I have put together an outline on that. Then we had a preliminary talk with CWU because we had an outreach, uh, from their communications department that's wanting to do some on-hands work with us. We had a preliminary meeting with them, and we have another one in a couple of weeks, um, talking about maybe letting them help us with some of that legwork. Now with Catherine's transition, um, I, I need to sit down, I mentioned briefly with Manda about pulling in the recognition team and helping us with that, and so the date is reserved, uh, we, we've got the outline of the plan, we just need to execute on it.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to tell you, if you didn't see in the chat box, um, we have been in IC for nine hundred and six days, um, not counting the two weeks that we were opened up for our first suspected case at CWU. So, um, Tricia sent me a message, that's kind of why everybody's tired right now.
Please, that's a question for Michelle. Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Hi.
Thank you.
Education and Boarding Courts, rural advocacy day is September nineteenth through the twenty-second of Washington, DC.
So, uh, Congress will be in session, I think, um, I, my sources tell me that's the only week in September the both chambers are going to be there, so. I, there's still not a lot of, uh, framework around how they're going to handle, some of this will be tele-visits, what committees will be meeting with if we go back. Um, this was one, I think, we had, uh, partis, pre-COVID, we had quite a bit of participation from commissioners in going back there. Um, I, I don't know what they're going to do, and their federal lobbyist has retired. And I don't know how they have replaced him or, or what they're going to do about setting this up, so. And we're having, uh, our CEO meeting was canceled this morning, a rural CEO meeting, so we were expecting that today.
Julie, I heard, what I heard from the HA was that, um, what rural advocacy would be going on would be, uh, individual people would have to arrange it with their individual legislators. So it sounds like there's not a whole lot of structure around it.
I'm not excited about this. I mean, I, I think that touching, um, you know, Dr. Schreier in district, if we want to do some advocacy, would probably be a better approach for us, we see her a couple times a year anyway. Dr. Martin was going back for a conference, and he told me he got two middle seats for him.
Those are the same dates as the conference that we're going to be recruiting at. And, yeah, uh, I couldn't get two seats in the same row.
But he's going to be the guy in the middle seat. Typically, I, again, hopefully, things get sorted out. That can be a very valuable time, like a great learning experience. Maybe this time next year, it'll be a little more smooth down.
Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, I agree with you, Julie, I think, I mean, I, I did this, um, a couple of years, I think, and it's a really exciting, I mean, valuable experience, but, yeah, I'm going to wait till next year, I think.
Did you do that before COVID?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, and whole business, I mean, whole business is blank, people have whole business, business. New business. All right. You know, on to executive session, we're supposed to discuss.
I have maybe five minutes.
Five minutes?
One topic.
Okay. And does that include the topics that we, okay, and maybe five more? I don't think it'll be a long discussion.
Could, could be longer.
Do you think it'll, do you think it'll be longer?
I, I don't know, I mean, if.
We can always extend, but it's really hard to say, hey, everybody, we finish.
We start short, we'll extend if.
Maybe ten minutes? Five minutes, ten minutes, or fifteen?
Fifteen, twelve.
I'm going to ask Dr. Martin and, um, Ryan. Your name again, Amanda.
All right, um, per RCW four-two dot three-zero dot one-one-zero BG. So, um, we should recess until maybe twenty-five after, if anyone can read.
Well, Matt called that Cleveland.
Oh, that's the question. Yes, yeah, he's got it.
Are you accepting action?
So we should be, we can use those in session then, um, by the forty? Does that sound good? Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's first look at one of them.
All right.